Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/49countynewsTV.
Lord Jesus, we come before you, holding the throne again. We thank you for the elected officials. We thank you. Pray for this country, God, elected officials. And we pray for every elected official, God, because they got a task ahead of them. And pray for this meeting, God, and give us wisdom. Do the right thing for the people that elected us. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing, I want to call me Doris, first thing is, have a motion we approve, please. Make the motion.
I say.
All fair say aye. Have a motion we approve the minutes?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Second. All fair say aye. At this point in time, we need to go into executive session to name and character person involved here. So have a motion we go, how long you think it takes? Less than thirty minutes?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion we do so.
I'll make that motion.
All fair say aye? Okay, so if we'll just. Good morning. How y'all doing?
Yeah, we're good. How are you?
So are we. You know about time, you as well.
I know, yeah, yeah, yeah. No problem.
They're going to go back into executive section, I mean, regular section.
Make the motion.
Second, second. All fair say aye? Both black lives. We need to go in this meeting with Brook, get home's KU, or we need to take care of this other, one of those other gentlemen, kind of?
Things like other gentleman shall take five minutes, shall run through, and then we'll shut the door.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we talked about Thursday, the work session, but Mr. Spencer Addison will be promoted to the department of promotion to the facility, to that department. Can I get something like that recommendation?
You may get more of a motion, air a second on that.
I say.
Probably need question before vote. All fair say aye?
Tell you, y'all got that county mold on the water shit down. I don't know if y'all want to do that as a part of my part, if y'all want to do that separately on the water shit down, I wouldn't.
The words would be same agreements was before they come in here. Cusa County, check here this.
Cusa County, RCND.
It's the only ones in four and five districts. Does anybody else have any of those?
No, we have three of them in there in four and five. And it's a good deal, something that's worked through the past.
I'm not going to do it.
And those dams need maintained, so I'd recommend that y'all enter that agreement with them to do that.
Okay, I have a second on that.
I'll second.
All fair say aye? Both black lives.
Okay, also, I got something via fax that's kind of important. We've got a, on our County Road Nine, bridge replacement. I got to fund the agreement between the Department of Transportation and the County Commission. And it's actually five hundred twenty-one thousand dollars, atrip funds, one hundred thirty thousand ramp funds, for total six hundred fifty-one thousand, which is a hundred percent state money. Recommend that we enter that agreement to fund that project.
I'll make a motion.
Sounds patient.
I'll make a motion.
We'll take those hundred percent any day you want to get them to us.
Where's this, which district is this?
Commissioner Cochran.
They got a four, they got a.
He seems to be getting a lion's share here lately.
I got a motion to have a second.
I'll make, I say.
All fair say aye?
And then another thing, we have our County Engineers Annual Conference that comes up in May. I'd like for y'all to approve myself and the Assistant Engineer, and then the County Road Bridge Supervisor, Curtis. He's, they have a part of the program that he's a part of. He's required to attend in order to be on that committee.
Where are these, where are these meetings?
It's in Orange Beach.
Okay. They're motion we, from out what, three?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I say.
All fair say aye? Okay.
That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, next time. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Thanks, sir. Thank you guys for the invitation. I'm Burke Haynes, from Goodwill and Kaywood. It's been a while since I've been to the County Commission, since I can.
Burke raised it from Berlin.
Yeah, yes.
Till he went in with a bigger, better thing.
Goodwill and Kaywood, or we call it GMC. Not the Trump people, but GMC. I have to say that. You surprise many people. This is Freddie. Freddie is one of our architects from Montgomery Office, who does a lot of work with jails and the state prison system, et cetera, et cetera. But we appreciate the opportunity to be here. I've been working in and around Van County and Hamilton for thirty years today. We still maintain the office in Berlin, have personnel there, still do work for the American Water Authority in the city of Hamilton. We're here, have somebody here in Hamilton, almost two or three times a week. So we have boots on the ground already. We know the, we know the infrastructure, we know the area, we know the site, because we've dealt with Hamilton and the area for so long. The expertise that we don't have in the Berlin office is on the, is on the architects in jail side. We don't, we don't have an architect in the Berlin office. But fortunately Freddie and his folks in Montgomery and folks in Birmingham fill in for us. We, we're a big firm in that we have almost four hundred employees, sixteen offices across the southeast. But we operate like a small firm, in that each office works on its own to go out and get work and to execute work. And when we need help, we call in experts from other offices to help. But we do maintain that local presence. We're here, something comes up, we can be here in thirty minutes, that sort of thing. We appreciate the opportunity to be here again. As I say, Paul Burke Halter, from our office in Berlin, runs the Berlin office now. And he couldn't be here today. He was under the weather. I didn't want him riding in the car with me. So he, Paul's not with us today, but Paul will be up here. And he's here all the time. So I'm going to let Freddie talk to you a little bit about the things that he has done and continues to do with the state prison system and the county jails and that sort of thing. So Freddie?
Thank you. Appreciate y'all letting us come for you today. Back in 2007, we were hired by the Alabama Department of Corrections to do a facility assessment and need study for the entire prison system. We did that for them, and then, and they were never able really to get their funding together for that. So they asked us to redo it again in 2017, and they had noticed population trends in prisons were going down. So in 2017, we looked at seventeen of their major facilities. We were up here looking at the Hamilton A's and the firm, I spent a couple of days in that facility. We went to every facility in the state, and we did the report with, we assembled a team of professionals, and we did the report that's the eight hundred million dollar bond issue you've all heard about was based on. We have done population studies for them, staffing plans for them, all those things. What Goodwill and Kaywood has really gotten into in the past couple of years is doing facility assessments and use assessments. That's where we do the front end work, where we interview, where we determine, you know, what is your population trend in terms of your jails? What's your custody levels? Are we talking about women and men and the youth? They look at all those things, and it helps you develop a staffing plan, and then a master plan for the whole facility. So we have done a lot of those type of studies. We do the same things for community colleges, K through twelve systems, and universities. So facility assessments, master plans, just basically so you can put together kind of the capital plan, just know where you're headed in the future, the kind of plan you can do. We work with a lot of experts on that. We work with a couple of national firms in terms of detention, facility design, justice design. And we work with some in-house resources too, in terms of security. One thing Goodwill and Kaywood is good at is being a good teammate. We're very collaborative as a company. I'm an architect, but work every day with civil engineer like Burke. We have in-house community planning, in-house civil, of course, best infrastructure, like municipal engineering, landscape architects, interior design, survey, geotech. So we really are collaborative, and what that's made us do is become very much collaborative with other firms, firms that have expertise in jail design and prison design beyond what we're able to do within the state. So we can grab all those resources and let you know what the trends are across the southeast, across the nation, but you still have a local firm. Somebody thirty, thirty miles away, if you be here, have the drop of a hat. So that's the benefit that we can bring to you, is it giving you a kind of a, I like to say, big picture thinking on a smaller project. At this point, we don't know a lot about your needs. We, I have seen it. We've taken a big tour and haven't gone in it yet. But we'd love the opportunity to sit down with you and just figure out what your needs are and where you're headed and work with you. We think we can put the right team together to do that. It's a team that's familiar with working with you already, a team that knows how to work within the county, within the city. And so that's a win for you. You're not starting over with someone learning how to do your processes. We just bring in another group of experts. So I guess that was my spiel for you today. I appreciate y'all letting us come here. I do have, I have, one of them is unbound. I'll give you the unbound, but we did put together a little bit of brochure here that has some of my extension facilities, county facilities in town. We've got about forty projects ongoing right now with the Department of Corrections all over the state. We're here quite often. And if there's any questions you have, be glad to answer them, or get your time to meet with you.
Okay, we certainly appreciate that. Anyone have any questions or look at this information, we'll get back with you. Certainly appreciate. Burke, good seeing you again.
Good seeing you. Remember, we didn't take our whole thirty minutes.
Okay.
That's a plus, if we don't take our whole thirty minutes. One thing I want you to take away from this, President, this little talk, is that one of the things that we do the best, I think, is that we listen to our client. We're not going to come in here and say, this is what you need to do. We're going to come in here and sit down and talk with you guys and to share, talk about the facility. What do you want to accomplish? And we're going to come up with a plan that fits what you want to accomplish, not what we want to accomplish, not what fits somewhere else. Everybody's unique. Every situation is unique. Everyone is different. So, you know, we, I think we listen better than most people do. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you have any other, I don't know, facilities? Chairman, please.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I love you, and I've met you before.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
These guys have got a display.
We need to move in later?
Yes, sir. They're going to do a PowerPoint.
Will you be able to, to do?
Yeah, I can.
I got Liz Long, mother.
Somebody, we never did find out. Somebody unlucky. We picked up tension eighty, I tell you. They come from somebody's torso.
Goes down on his dealer and that.
That's a, that's a.
Little thing.
Something out of the lagoon, George. Sweet lagoon.
Just get this ready to launch. Commissioners, don't want to introduce yourself while he's doing that.
Any more chairs?
Good morning. Want to thank y'all for the opportunity to introduce ourselves and present to y'all. My name is Patrick Addison. I'm a partner with PH and J. And this is my partner, Ren Jones. And we are PH and J, out of Montgomery, Alabama.
I have a little handout for you. Just a minute or two seems like a long time, doesn't it?
When everybody's sitting there with pated breath watching me.
Well, gentlemen, I've known Ren Jones for sixteen years, and he's been affiliated, his company's been affiliated with the Sheriff's Association probably over thirty years, I guess, way before I got there. But I know that they built a lot of jails in Alabama, and I know they remodeled a lot of jails in the state of Alabama. So they have expertise in jail facilities. That's the reason I wanted to get them involved also. And we have a lot of good companies out there that we're on, but PH and J has, has been a good friend, associations, and a good friend of mine, Ren, and his daddy, Ren, over the years. Appreciate y'all coming up from Montgomery.
I'm sure. Just still waiting for this thing to load. Not really sure where. Yes. I figured that. No, but I just know. I know what that is. Tell you what, we'll just go through the first part of the handout, and we'll be able to use the PowerPoint for some of our projects. But. I recognize you.
Oh, that's good and bad.
That's a good thing. You know, we've been going to the County Commission's Conference for twenty-five years. I'm usually right there at booth number one.
Yes, sir. Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, I'm sure I've met you before then.
Yes, sir.
This is my twenty-fifth year.
Oh, my. So you're the, so you're the new guy.
Yes.
Well, I see. I've learned a lot.
I've learned a lot. Pearson, Humphries, and Jones, started by my father and a couple of other partners. And we have been doing government work ever since the firm started. We've done bank schools and churches over the years. We've actually done work across the street at the college. We did the nursing building down at Bevel, Hamilton. And we also pitched roofs on those buildings back there. And I was up here last year or two with the welding program. But our firm has about twenty folks. I included in your handout a little, just a little introductory letter. And I think it's trying to be mobile with my presentation. Is this one too? There. Look at that. Patrick, I think we got.
Multiple versions coming out?
Yeah, I think we've got it opened up several times. There we go. Thank you again. I'm Ren Jones, Pearson, Humphries, and Jones. Patrick Addison is my partner. Patrick designs all of our jail projects. He's also been doing some other first responder type of projects. I'm not sure Sheriff, if you knew that we were doing some of the nine-one-one projects around the state. We have one over in Huntsville, Madison County right now, which is under construction. We have one down in Robertstown in Baldwin County, which will be one of the largest in the state when it's finished. But then when the one in Huntsville gets completed, it will be the largest in the state.
I'm aware of that. I'm aware of that.
We've been associated with the Alabama, uh, the Association of County Commissioners of Alabama for nearly thirty years, and we designed their building in Montgomery. At, at one point, you'll have an opportunity to see the building that we designed. And they're, they're moving next door to a high-rise, but I'm sure you've been into, uh, that building behind the Gordon Persson's building. As I said, we, we do government work, education, school projects. Uh, and we're all over the state of Alabama. I think we've worked in all but two counties, um, in the state. This is our crew, about twenty folks. Um, you'll see some young faces and you'll see some gray hair. But I think it's a good balance of, uh, energy and experience. We're the, we're the old firm in Montgomery. Uh, when, when the kids get out of Arkham, or whatever school of architecture that they graduate from, they tend to come and knock on our door if they want to come to work for us, because we have a lot of experience. And we have a good reputation, and we're proud of that. We don't take it for granted. We are a full modern firm with CAD and all the software. These are our senior architects that we would, uh, offer to you as a team. Patrick's on that team. Um, I mentioned earlier that we've worked in about sixty-five of the sixty-seven counties, which is pretty remarkable. I think there's probably not many other firms in the state that can say that. We're talking about criminal justice and detention and jail work specifically. We've done, um, a hundred and twenty-eight detention facility projects. And that's not a hundred and twenty-eight jails, but that's a hundred and twenty-eight additions, upgrades. Some of those are jails, I think twenty-seven of those are brand-new jails. And those are all over the state. And in a minute, I'm gonna let Patrick talk to you just a little bit about those specific projects. Well, here, I'll let Patrick talk to you now about the parts and pieces of the, of the jail.
All right, primarily, um, jails today are becoming very high-tech facilities. Um, all of our door-opening capabilities, all of our monitoring and our surveillance is all high-tech. It, the control rooms look like, uh, communication centers. But, but it, but in the, when you break it all down, it still comes down to the same thing, which is you have the same functions and the same roles that you had years ago. Um, we have salary ports where you bring people into the facilities. It can be as simple as a fenced-in yard, or as, um, nowadays, we're doing more enclosed salary ports because we're trying to keep the arrestees out of the public view, uh, while they're transitioned into the jail. Um, booking and intake, you can see an example here, um, where we, um, inmates or, or arrestees are brought in, they're classified, um, and, and put into the system. Uh, jail administration areas, like I said, very high-tech, uh, cameras, monitors, um, even our jail server rooms, all our jails now have server rooms, uh, that, uh, are recording all the commands, all the, uh, cameras. And depending on the requirements that the county and the, um, administration wants, we'll, in some cases, we'll record up to ninety days. Um, state doesn't require ninety days, but some counties do, um, just, uh, to protect themselves. So they have those recordings in case someone claims something happened, where you can go back and look at them and see if the things really happened. Kitchens, uh, usually our kitchens are, are, are some of the nicer, um, um, kitchens that you'll find anywhere. I mean, it's unfortunate, but these kitchens run twenty-four-seven in most cases, um, depending on the number of inmates that the jail has. And they, uh, you know, they, they're right up there with any kitchen you'll find in a commercial facility. Housing and, and segregation. Today's housing areas can be anything from dormitories all the way up to individual cells. These cells can be individual cells, or they can be two-man, or even up to four-man cells. They include dayrooms where they can get out of the cells and have a secure kind of environment where they can sit around, talk, have tables and stuff like that, but still secure in the facility. Uh, isolation cells are, you can see here along this picture here, they are primarily, um, in those cells twenty-four hour, or tw- twenty-three to twenty-four hours a day, depending on, on, on what they're in for. And they're, they're isolated from the general population. Gonna very quickly kind of go through several facilities that we have done over the years. This is the Otaga County, um, Metro Jail Facility in Prattville, Alabama. It's, um, one of more unique jails in that, um, the commissioners in that county had the foresight to shell in several floors for the future, um, and only, um, finished out bottom floors. And then over the years, we've, we've renovated those floors at a much cheaper cost to the commission and to the county. Um, you know, because as the years go on, prices get more expensive and stuff like that. So that was kind of unique in Otaga County, that they did that. And it's really worked out to a benefit for them. In fact, we're, the, the very top level, we're getting ready. We're talking with them about filling that out at this time.
How many floors can you go on that? How many stages?
Um, i- i- it just all depends on what your population needs are. Typically, um, our general housing pod, what we use in Otaga has is about a hundred and twenty-five.
Per floor?
Per floor. And they built three levels, so they only built out a hundred and twenty-five at the first time. And now they're going in and filling those in. So they're basically, every time they do an infill, they're adding a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty beds at each of those levels. And the nice thing is, is because they're not fit, fit out, they, the sheriff can kind of adjust the fit out to what his needs are at the time. Like, um, right now, one of the, um, floors is just gonna be trusty dormitories, because he doesn't need all the cells and all, um, for his, uh, minimum security focus. But, you know, this is, uh, example here of Baldwin County. And you can see this level here is a four-story, um, housing.
And it holds nearly nine hundred. And we've done, from the beginning.
A little over two hundred per floor?
Yes, sir.
What would you suggest in, in Marion County, like on our population and stuff, and what Kevin has? What would you suggest per floor? If you'd done that system, what would you project?
When, and, and I, and I'll back up, I'll let Patrick answer. But when we talk, there's, there's a floor, and then there's a mezzanine, if you're familiar with those typical layouts. It's kind of a balcony with an open space to the dayroom. Um, and that would really be four double floors. I would suspect that, uh, Marion County would probably wouldn't need more than two floors, depending on what your bed count would be. I anticipate, and we'll get into this a little bit further after we finish our, looking at our projects, I anticipate probably a good number of dormitory beds, uh, medium security, uh, and not single or double man cells. But I wouldn't see more than about two floors.
And, and, and the, whether you go vertical or spread out, it, it's really a, a factor of the property you have available. Because going vertical is expensive, because once you go past the, I, I say floors, but really it's a floor mezzanine. Once you go first, pass that first floor mezzanine, you're into elevators and stuff like that, which are a maintenance issue for, for, for you. Uh, whereas if you've got a lot of property and we can spread it out all on one floor, it's a benefit to you.
I mean, to speak to your presentation, but is there, y'all, have y'all seen with the corrections center and with the judicial center as well, combining those two?
We have, um, there are, um, several facilities where we have done that. Um, Winston County, we did that.
Okay.
Uh, we're talking with, um, Pike County about doing that at this time.
So y'all have done that, y'all did Winston County. What are the advantages of doing, doing that in Winston County? And that was in addition to their historical courthouse?
The benefits are really, um, transportation. You're not having to load up inmates in a van, drive them across town or across county to the courthouse. You're right there, you put them in a secure elevator, you bring them up, or you, or you maneuver them through the facility to your courtroom.
So that would end up saving the sheriff quite a bit of money.
Tremendous amount. And, and, and moving inmates is where you put your deputies and all at risk. Anytime you're moving, um, inmates through even the facilities, um, we're working in Mobile County right now, and the risk is so high, um, with that facility, that they shackle inmates even to move them from one housing building to another. And it's, you know, it's just, you know, that's, that's where the risk is, is when you're transporting them. So there is a lot of benefit in keeping it all kind of defined. This project, uh, is, uh, is a medium, really a medium to minimum security dormitory building that is actually breaking ground today in, uh, Lefet, Alabama. And it is a hundred and twenty-bed facility, uh, dormitory. It has, uh, separate medical laundry, uh, facilities associated with it. So you're, we're not moving these folks into the other jail buildings. We're keeping them kind of in their own area. Um, and then the kitchen meals are brought to them when they're, um, in the, those housing areas, but.
And, and this housing is, this is similar to what you might say, uh, see in the state of Alabama prison system. It's just open dormitory, but it's medium security.
You can see right here to the side here, this is their main jail facility where they have cells and stuff like that. The problem they have right now is they have, uh, a lot of minor, um, minimum security inmates. And unfortunately, they're having to mix them in with high-risk folks, so they're trying to get them separated.
That's the problem we have, and a large problem we have.
This, this facility also is gonna have their work release, uh, program. So they'll be able to release, uh, inmates during the day. They can go, um, do their job, come back and be housed at night.
This a hundred and twenty-bed addition was about four and a half million dollars.
And it's very recent.
Was that more like a, I noticed, like a metal building design?
It's secure. I know it's secure, but.
It, it's, uh, what you see is a lot of roof right there.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's not, it's concrete, it's twelve-inch concrete block, uh, masonry walls with a metal roof on top. So it is, it's built medium security.
Right.
But, uh, it's just a lot of roof there. Because you can see we kind of dropped the center sections of the roof so we could get some clear story, so we could get some natural light in there. Be- because what we ended up doing was these exercise yards on each side are, are not open air. The sheriff wanted to cage them in. He was worried about, um, there's a lot of drones and stuff like that, and they're right downtown. So he was worried about people throwing contraband over into the yards.
We wouldn't worry about that.
So he's, he's.
It happens.
Yeah, it happened to me. Right, so he's doing total enclosures on that. So we had to figure out another way to get, uh, some natural light in, um, to meet the ACA requirements. So we put the clear-story windows up top, they're twenty-four foot up, up there. There's storm windows, uh, impact windows, so we don't have to worry about inmates getting up to them.
What's the difference in the minimum security and the maximum security price-wise on that one thing?
Well, when you get into maximum security, you're really talking about cells. And it's those cell walls and doors and.
Individual toilets.
Plumbing fixtures and stuff like that. Once you get to a dormitory, instead of one fixture for two inmates, you're actually at one fixture for fifteen inmates. So there's a lot of benefit if you, if your population, you can keep them in dormitory rather than them putting them into, um, maximum security, where you have slider doors that, that are open by the controls, um, officer. You know, those doors, uh, typically are about thirteen thousand dollars apiece. At each of those cells, you can imagine how much, how quickly it adds up.
How many cells do you need?
Well, right now, we don't, we don't have but three isolation cells. We gotta double unleash that one right now. Then we have some sex offenders that we have in protective custody. That's gotten to be out of hand, more and more of those inmates, because you can't put them in general population because of certain reasons, the crime that they committed. So I don't know off the top of my head the percentage, but, uh, then you got your ten capital murderers in jail too that need to be separated. So I've got to have some individual cells and, you know, and a pod would be great one the other, because you got the city inmates and the misdemeanor inmates that we can put in those.
And there, and there will be some, there'll be some vocabulary to learn. Classification, segregation, isolation. But, but that happens as we get deeper into deciding what your, what your size is gonna be.
Uh, this, uh, is the Coffey County Jail. Uh, we finished a small three-thousand-square-foot addition. It's a dormitory addition onto their, uh, jail for their female population. Their original female population, um, was set up for, uh, sixteen women when this jail was built in ninety-three. Their population now, women, is over forty. Uh, so we built, um, this dormitory, um, and you can see from the picture, you can see the dormitory, and then you can see where we renovated inside the existing jail, the cells there for their worst, their worst women, so they can keep them up to, uh, um, and we're getting ready, talking with them about doing a similar building, but much larger for the men, so they can do a work release facility. But dormitories are, are really the direction. We see more facilities going to taking advantage of the fact that these guys aren't arresting themselves and the others, they just need to have a place where you can lock them up and, and keep them in control, um, versus going to the expense of putting them in full lockup.
Is that forty or forty-four?
It's forty-four.
And that's about a million?
Yes, but that includes the renovations in the existing jail.
Yeah.
So that's one problem we have, I mean, is, is the women population is forty-two in my county today. So it's risen forty percent, you know, my numbers.
We used to design it to ten percent female, yes. That number's come up to about twenty-five, maybe close to thirty, yeah. That's about right here, same problem.
And we're seeing this across the state. It's not, uh... This is Covington, we did a ver- we did the same addition, um, at Covington that we did at Coffey, um, to solve their female housing population problem. And what makes this, um, little pod kind of, um, let me flip that one. You can see here, we got, we divide the popu- the, the housing into basically twenty-two and twenty-two. And we have a central plumbing chase running down the center of the building. So you can literally, uh, walk in between and work on the plumbing inside the plumbing chase and not have to get into the inmate areas. So, um, it's, uh, turned out to be a very nice, uh, um, design for, um, this, the jail, folks at the jail that have to keep and maintain it. Um, because they don't like going into areas and have to work on plumbing stuff with, um, and having to clear out areas and stuff like that for them to get in and do their job. It's very nice for them, they just get in the plumbing chase, work on this, the plumbing from the backside, and, and then you don't have to.
Could you make a comparison, say, with a fifty-year-old jail, which ours is approaching fifty, I guess, isn't it? How much is technology? If it took X number of personnel to run a fifty-year-old jail, compared today with running the same kind of jail, how much is technology? Have you, uh, manpower-wise?
We have actually reduced the number of people required to, to run the jail itself. Um, typically, you have a housing, uh, in, like in a pod facility, you have a central pod, and that person's typically watching a hundred and twenty people from that center portion. And there's usually a rover that's assigned to him that if anybody hits a, um, intercom, something that they need help or something like that, he does, the guard, main guard controller doesn't leave the thing. He sends his rover to go investigate or see what's going on. Um, so typically, the, that would be the, um, primary supervision.
So if you run a fifty-year-old jail, I mean, with, with, say, uh, a hundred beds, cheaper now than you could then?
Yes, sir, you can.
After you pay for only here.
Yes, sir.
And part of that is the architecture, um at the sheriff's, at y'all's jail, it's a linear jail. And the only way to look into the cells is for rover to actually go and look into each of those cells. Whereas the new architecture of corrections, they want to have visibility into each of those cells. You might not be able to see everything, but you can certainly get an idea of what's going on in every cell in that block. Like in Winston County, they can put that camera into every cell, you know exactly what's happening and going on, there's nothing that would escape whomever's at the control tower.
This is a good example here, you can see the floor plan of the pod here, and this is the control officer. He can look in to each of those day rooms. And this this might, color selection is very important in jails. And you can see.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna dim the lights if I could, cause it might be a little bit easier for you to take in, hope that's my.
You can see the the cell fronts are all painted dark. And the reason for us painting it dark is you can actually see um into that cell. So you can see the inmate in in that cell um doing what he's, whatever he's doing. If we painted that cell front white, it would get all muddy and it would be very difficult. So there's a lot of um even down, technology, even down to the colors that we paint the walls, paint the security hollow metal. So it improves the visibility um for the viewing officer.
Yeah, I thought you were gonna talk about the color for the female wedge right there.
Oh, I I can talk about that. Um we had at, here at Monroe, we had, you can see the one little piece of wedge, that was the female area. At the time, this was actually built in ninety-three, so um they've actually expanded now into two wedges for their female population. But the guard tower actually butts up to the the glass in those two wedges here in the upper corner right here. And that's so he can have direct supervision and none of the other inmates in the other wedges can see into the female population.
That way Winston County do, I believe it is. Think so, from what I saw, yes.
On the Winston.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. It's definitely, it's definitely different.
Well, what point in time do you come to us to do an assessment? Who do you all recommend, or you take the sheriff's recommendation? How big a jail do we need and how mu- uh?
Don't turn that light on, man.
Well, Commissioner, if you give us just a minute to finish up.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And we're gonna speak a little bit about that as well.
Okay, good.
This is the Winston County Jail that we we did. And a- as we said, this was tied on to the existing courthouse by a jail and link. And the jail is the bottom two areas and then the courthouse is up on the upper floor. And there's courtrooms and judges' suites and stuff like that, so um it's very easy for us to bring the inmates up to the courtroom, which you see pictured right there. This is a Talladega, we did a small administration building. Their original jail had their administration building in their booking area. And their administration had grown to the point where they needed room for booking, so they moved uh across the parking lot into this uh. About a seven thousand square foot addition that we had done for for them. That includes deputy area, showers, locker rooms, muster areas and stuff like that. So we were able to take all the space in the jail that was previously being used for administration in the sheriff's office and we pulled it out. So now we we use that space for inmate areas. Uh this is the nine-one-one um facility that we, that's under construction right now in Huntsville, Madison County. And it will be the largest facility in the state once completed.
We basically showed that just because we want you to know that we are, we do work in your area. We work, we've worked in Phil Campbell and Muscle Shoals, Athens, we're working on that project in Huntsville.
All right, um this kinda gets into um more of our, the way we kinda approach um our facilities. We we assign a a senior partner to each of our projects. We don't just give it to an intern architect and and just staff architect and we just let them run with it. We keep supervision um from the very top to the very bottom on every product, project, doesn't matter what size it is. Um we uh promote collaboration approaches with our clients. And that would include early stages of programming um and planning for the, for their projects. Even down to design analysis. Uh we understand uh that uh. Money is very tight for you guys. And we try very much to um keep that in mind as we're designing these facilities. Um so you get the best bang for your buck um in these facilities. Construction administration representatives, uh we're very unique. We actually have construction administration folks on our staff. Uh these guys are um retired contractors that are just, have gotten to the point where um they're. They're ready to kinda go to a little slower pace. But the the amount of experience and knowledge that they have, they've become very beneficial for us and for our clients. In that they are on the job site every week, watching the contractor as the project's being built. So um the contractors build it as per the drawings and specs, so you get what you pay for.
It's it's up to the architect to recommend that the owner pay the monthly draw. That's one of, that's one of our roles. We inspect it, we make sure that his materials that are shown on his draw are on the site. That the work has been accomplished up to a certain percentage. And we, we can write you a letter, that's our fiduciary responsibility. To send that monthly draw to the county administrators and to present to the commission. That we recommend that you pay, because we want you to have money at the end of the project. We don't, you know, the contractors are notorious for trying to get ahead of the money. So we have a great reputation for our construction administration.
Now, this is just a a brief breakdown of all the different components within the different areas. From intake, uh discharge, administration, laundry, um visitation. Visitation is one of those things that has really gotten um a very high-tech now. Now, visitation is is on a computer. You're, you don't necessarily have to have families come into the jail and be face-to-face with the inmate. You can, the inmate can stay back in the housing area and he'll get on a screen and. And the family members can be on a screen, either they're at the jail facility or at a remote location away from the jail. Um which is a secure, it's a safety benefit to the sheriff, cause he doesn't have to transport the the uh. Inmates from their housing area up to the visitation area, so. That is a pretty uh high-tech thing today. And and we even find tablets now in jails, um where they can do their visitation on a tablet. Or they can order their commissary supplies and stuff like that, so. And that, it seems to work very well. It's a kind of, kind of a new kinda aspect of detention electronics. Maintenance is um and support, uh medical services, housing population, general population. So you can see, there's, there's a whole series of items that we'll go through and 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 design whatever size facility it is. That you're looking for to accommodate your needs.
And and then I'll discuss the next few. But those items that we were just showing you, we'll go through every one of those items during designing. We'll come up with kind of a, how much can the county afford? As you know, a jail population has a lot to do with the district attorney, your judges, I mean, people can be bonded out. So it's really not just how many people can you, can you stuff in the jail, how many do you really need? And that, uh that's something that would probably take uh the seasoned sheriff's input. Your uh finan- financial abilities. All that to be brought into in consideration, and we will give you the um some guidance as far as numbers. Usually they're put together in wedges of sixteen. So if you can come up with the, with the right mix of dormitory, medium-secure cells. That's really part of the design discussion, is the number of people that you would be able to finally ultimately want to house. Now, just briefly, and I appreciate your patience in getting the um presentation put up. That was really just kind of an overview about our firm. I've actually been on-site with the sheriff. It's been back in two thousand fourteen, so it's actually been four or five years ago, sheriff. When I came to the, to the jail, we, we found the plans, we've studied it. This is uh what we call a linear jail, it takes the most amount of manpower to manage. We were talking about that earlier, as far as you have to walk all the way down this perimeter to look into the cells. I think I took about two hundred pictures. And all of this was really in hopes that the sheriff would be able to convince the commission to please build him a new jail. And I think we'd probably have taken a step past that now.
The needs there.
But uh we we had, we collected a lot of data about the county. One thing that was very interesting, Sheriff, is that um your population, when it hits about twenty-five to twenty-nine. That's, most of your guys in there are in that age range. It's just really amazing, but this is for your county. From eighteen to twenty-four, it's moderate. But when you hit twenty-five to twenty-nine and thirty to thirty-four, those are your, those are your prime inmate ages. Very interesting about your county, this is your population line. Your population line is just about steady. And when we studied this in two thousand fourteen, that was in July of two thousand fourteen, is about thirty thousand two hundred and seventy-one was your county population. And I'm not really sure how that's changed. But all that to say is we have done a great deal of work discussing the project with the sheriff over the years. We, and we appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you a little bit about who we are. Again, sorry for the bright light. That's really about all, all we had. We took about thirty minutes. Do we have any, any questions? I hope that y'all would just throw me one.
Where I have to look at the study, what do you think, because that's the jail we did build?
Well, that's, that's, that's the big question. You know, the sheriff talked to me here a couple of months ago and he said, he said, Ren, you know, I wanna remind you that our jail was built for eighty-six. And we've been running about a hundred. But in the last couple of months, we've gotten up to a hundred and sixty-two. And then I think the other day, you said, Sheriff, you have anything?
I had a hundred and seventy-two the other day when we talked, and now the day I have a hundred and seventy-six.
Right.
So the problem that I have is, you know, I keep throwing, say, three hundred beds out there, Ren. Uh there's, there's a lot of people out there though that's on community corrections and state probation's that the judge would put in jail. He'd send it to them a one-year in jail as long as, but I don't have the room, I don't have the facility. So if I have a hundred and seventy in the jail today, I'm sure I could put a hundred and ninety in there. And take some of these folks off of community corrections, that need to be off of community corrections. That's the problem we're running in Marion County. I don't know. Now, you talk about breakdown of cells, yes, we need the pod system, like you're talking about the dormitory, would save us a lot of money. But then you're gonna have to have some isolation cells, you know, and and one of the things I'd like to have, and even when we get to talking about designing, the complete design. Is is a seventy-two-hour holding cells. Where these people are brought to jail on Friday night and Monday morning they can bond out and we don't have to dress them out and put them in population. Things like that's what we gotta look at too. I'm all for the dormitory, their women situation is pathetic.
It's got pictures.
You've seen it, it's getting worse.
I think it was pretty much a continuous mattress.
Yes.
Collection of.
It's a dorm room, if that's what you wanna call it, it's an office space with forty people in there, forty-two, hold on. And you know, and that's, when you design a jail, we're gonna have to look at those numbers. A different pod and whatever for them, and then you're gonna have to have some isolation cells for women, because, yeah, I've had a couple women in there for murder. That need to be separ- separated, but you can't. These are things we gotta sit down and look at as far as how many beds we know. Don't, I don't know, but what we build today, guys, is gonna have to last the future, cause our jail was built in nineteen seventy-nine, you know?
Let's um, y'all get into any kind of uh funding, how is most jails uh funded?
Let, let, let me share it with each of you. Mr. Burks, that's a few weeks that one. I'm, I'm, I'm kinda reluctant to uh to share this with you, but I, but I'm going to, because uh just in the full disclosure.
Typically, most counties, they will bond um projects.
They will get a bond, uh the most recent projects probably add a couple of cents sales tax. To pay off that bond. Like I said, I'm, I'm a little reluctant to show you these numbers, but I wanted to show you that if those were. A medium to max jail. With very little dormitory. This is, this is a full lockup. This has all the, all the associated complements for the facility. And I have that list here too, this is what we call programming items. It would include some degree of all of this. But this, but this list, this is, this is what we'd have to go through with the sheriff and with the commission. With the administrator, with the attorney, to see how you would best manage the jail. You know, some, some jails like to use the local clinic, the local hospital. So they don't mind taking their inmates over there to have things taken care of. And Baymanette, Patrick just put in a small medical unit into that existing jail so they could do it in-house. So really, some of it has to do with not just the numbers of beds that you need, but how you're gonna manage your facility.
And like the sheriff says, you know, uh these facilities, numbers are are very shocking. Um especially to the population, uh the public. Um you know, a lot of folks don't think you should spend this kind of money on inmates and um. But you know, the sheriff's right, if he had a two-hundred-bed facility, the judges would fill it up. What you've got to do is talk with the judges in the beginning, um as you're planning this and say, you know, get their input to say, you know, what or how would you react? How are you gonna react in terms of, you know, just because I have two-hundred beds, doesn't mean that we need to, that that's the final solution, just lock everybody up, so. Um it, 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 it's, cause you know, you could, these jails facilities can get very large. I mean, Mobile County, it's sixteen hundred people now. It is.
What was it built for?
Well, it has been, it has been built over the last thirty years, pod by pod by pod. And um it takes up three city blocks now. There, the deputies, this is kinda, I, I didn't believe it when I first went in there. But they have, they have arrows painted on the wall all the way up and there was a finish line. And I asked the sheriff what was that? And he says, well, it's a quarter mile from one end of this facility all the way to the other. And I have my deputies do the physical fitness test in this facility, that they have to run from one side of the jail to the other.
In a certain time. It's, it's there, and and there's a response time component to that. If something happens in one, one part of the jail, you gotta have your, a place where your, you know, where your employees can get there. Today, we've just introduced PA. We've been around a long time, I think you'll find if you ask around, we have a great reputation. Would love to help you continue the discussion and help you plan the, the size and type of facility. We've also done courthouses around the state, and I understand that that may be in the next. But uh we thank you for all the time that you gave us and. But, uh, we thank you for all the time that you gave us and we appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Sharing it stuff.
We're ready whenever you are.
Go ahead.
I apologize for the, uh, technical difficulties. Apparently I should've hooked the phone up to it, maybe that would've worn it down a little faster. My name is Sean Kalma with Lathan Associates Architects. And this is.
I'm Billy Moros, we're CMH Architects.
Uh, we are coming here as a team to present to you today. First of all, we'd like to thank you for having us up here, inviting us up to, uh, uh, potentially help you with the project. Um, we'll move through this fairly quickly because I know we've only got about thirty minutes. So we don't wanna, uh, go through a whole lot of, of detail. That I made a few copies of, of things if you'd like to go through in detail. But, uh, we would be your architect for this project. Lathan Associates would be the lead, uh, myself and Rick Lathan, uh, as well as Billy would be, um, our, a consultant to us, uh, for, um, architectural and security. Uh, proposed civil engineer, structural engineer, mechanical, plumbing and electrical engineers would be as we show here. Uh, if you'd like to review those in depth, we would be glad to. But the, this is a team we've assembled that we've done several, uh, jail and prison facilities with that we feel very confident and comfortable with. Um, first project we're gonna show you, we're just gonna show you some of our work and some of the things that we've done. We know a little bit about your project. We know, uh, realize that one of the big issues you have is overcrowding. Um, you're approximately double, um, what your facility is built for. Um, so we're just gonna show you a few of the projects that we've worked on that are of different genres. Some of them are for prisons, some of them are for, uh, sheriff stations and things like that. That can show you a little bit of our experience. Uh, first project here is Metro Area Crime Center we did for Jefferson County, a very interesting project where, uh, local municipalities come together in one building. They all have computers and they have a large computer screen wall with cameras set up around the county that pick up different information. Some municipalities, Huey Town may have a lead on a project that Trustful has got a suspect and it's in their district. So there's a lot of collaboration between those entities. This project is, uh, again for Jefferson County. We're also doing one, uh, called the E-Mac, which is in Eastern Alabama in Oxford for Chief Bill Partridge. Uh, very much the same type of project. Uh, Orange Beach Justice Center, uh, this, um, is currently their police and, um, judicial center, but they are in the process of, as everyone, trying to find money to build the project. Uh, and this project has sort of morphed into perhaps, uh, this speaks a little bit to our master planning abilities. Uh, we master planned and it, this is an existing building that we would add this facade onto. They're now considering moving and doing a whole new police station in a separate area and turning this into strictly their jail facility. So, uh, again, this is in Orange Beach, Alabama. Huey Town Police Department, Billy, you wanna speak a little bit to this one?
Yes, so the project that we've been designing consultants with, um, Lathan Associates. It's a fifty-bed jail addition to the Huey Town City Hall and Police Department. Um, the original jail was inside city hall, um, and that outgrown it, it'd gotten in bad shape. And so they took and we added fifty beds, thirty men, twenty women, uh, beds to the east side of the building and then renovated part, a portion of the existing building back for, uh, administration for the jail and also for the police administration.
Again, a different type of project. You can see the gray area to the left is an existing building. Um, so we took a little bit different approach. We could build this building totally separate, not interfere with the internal workings. Then they could move prisoners into that building.
Yeah, actually it hired, uh, somebody else to do this to start with. The budget came, came in way over budget and we were able to come back and get an efficient design and able to get it within their budget, get it down to their budget and still give them what they needed and a durable jail.
Budget tends to be kind of important sometimes. Uh, this is a new living barracks, uh, for, again, Jefferson County that we set up temporary trailer facilities, uh, for officers. Um, there, I believe this is at Kohlberg and this, again, just shows a different type of, um, ability to take, um, portable facilities and utilize them. And, uh, same concept we did when Hackleburg was hit, we made a, a trailer campus, all with covered walkways in between. This is more of a permanent fixture, but it's same sort of concept. Billy, you wanna speak a little bit to this one here?
Well, this was a renovation that, that was done for the criminal division for the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office where they changed the organizational chart where they came in and were adding different divisions for the detectives and for some cyber crimes and some other, uh, some other departments. And we came in and renovated the inside of this project. This was actually a second or third project that many, uh, completed this. Actually, I was the facilities manager for, and the head of the general services department for Jefferson County, retired twelve years ago and, and we actually had taken in the back portion of this building and added it to, uh, the very front part of the building, uh, the first, after the personnel board moved out, renovated it, added a new elevator. So the whole sheriff's department could be moved together.
Uh, McCullough Area Substation, this is again a facility that they've done several around the, the county. This is one of them that we did for them that had, uh, police offices, conference rooms, has, I believe, three or four jail cells in it. Uh, and it's just, again, a local facility where, um, they can all come to one place and it's localized to that McCullough area. They have several of these throughout the, the, uh, the county. Uh, Talladega County Detention Center, uh, Billy, you wanna speak to this one?
Yeah, this is a project that actually Lathan was the, um, kind of the program manager, program manager for, for the, for the project. And they put this out and we did a design build on this project with, uh, at that time Bryce Building Company. We added three hundred and fifty-two beds to their existing facility. That facility now has about five hundred and twenty-five beds in it. Uh, renovated a portion of the existing, renovated the booking. The addition, like I said, had a hundred and twenty beds, a dormitory style, and then had, uh, four-person cells in the back, four quadrants of that. Added, uh, renovated the medical wing for mental health, also for infectious diseases and, um, for trustees, replaced all the locks in the existing, uh, jail doors and replaced the air conditioning in the existing jail. Uh, also added a kitchen, laundry, commissary and a covered, um, facility.
Again, a different type of delivery method where we, as Billy said, acted sort of as the construction manager. Uh, I know Scott mentioned perhaps the potential of a construction manager. And we'll, Billy and I will speak to this a little bit more and, and later on in our presentation. But those are services or additional services that we can offer, uh, as on top of design and, and overseeing the construction of the project.
This is a project that CMH did, uh, finished it up in two thousand thirteen. It was a new justice center for the city of Anniston, had a hundred and ten, a hundred and ten bed jail. Um, had a courtroom facility in, in the building and a new police department, thirty-nine thousand square foot police department. Uh, we actually had to phase it, uh, this takes up a whole city block in downtown Anniston. There were a lot of environmental problems on the block. We had to clean up, uh, had a creek running through the block in the old facility. So, uh, was on the, on a portion of the block. Actually, when we got in there, it had a old cleaners there and they'd leaked out cleaning fluid down in the ground. We had to clean all that up before we got started. Plus the asbestos in the old building that we went through and removed before we could even demolish the old city police department. This project was about fifteen million dollars at that time. All-inclusive fees, everything at that time.
Program called, the whole program.
Whole program. This is, uh, another project we did, uh, I know y'all have had a couple of tornadoes come through this county, Hackleburg being the one. But Cordova was almost leveled by the tornadoes in two thousand eleven. Uh, and they hired us through a DECA, through a state grant, uh, to come in and design a new city hall, police department and a jail. The jail's not very large, it's about a twenty-five person jail. Uh, but it had, uh, a small, uh, warming kitchen, laundry, central control, electronic security and a new police department, um, also a court facility and city administration inside it. Project was about.
I didn't know that, city of Cordova.
Um, you mentioned a DECA and different funding sources. Actually, the, uh, E-Mac that we showed you early, or we showed you the MAC, which is Jefferson County, the one in Oxford is being done under, uh, Homeland Security. So we didn't have to bid that project, uh, because it was considered a, uh, emergency facility that for, uh, that type of what they're doing inside of it. So it allowed us to kind of skip that bidding.
Talladega County too, got some low-cost, uh, loan, um, when they were doing the projects through the Obama administration back in two thousand twelve, where they came in and got low, low interest loans. Uh, they're also paying for that with using money that they're housing stadium, state inmates.
I was gonna ask that, if they still, they have a contract with the state.
Sheriff Kilgore, um, they've, they've about paid for the facility. But you, glad to, uh, Sheriff Kilgore would be glad for you to go in and we'd be glad to host, host y'all and carry you down there if you need to see it. Very, very durable jail, uh, and, and like I said, they're paying for, paying their bonds off with state inmate.
How, how many, how many state inmates do you have to house, Kevin, to make, be qualified to receive that money? Are there a limit on them?
No, there's not a limit, just as a contract you have with the Department of Corrections, uh, through them that, you know, I don't know how many they house.
They house, at one time they were housing like ninety.
I was gonna say under a hundred, but.
They, they, um, but they, they built a special wing for, and we had to be sure that everything, when every jail job we do for jail jobs now have to meet the ACA guidelines because of the federal supervision of it, they come in and if they, that's the one thing you don't want to happen. It happened to us in Jefferson County when I was there in the early eighties. That's, that's definitely one thing you don't wanna see because that federal judge has, uh, authority like nobody else and he'll tell you what to do, he won't ask you what to do.
How much do you get off a, a person off, uh, a state inmate?
I wanna say it's around twenty-five, it used to be twenty-five dollars a day.
I think it's up now, sheriff, I think it's, I think it's thirty, when they signed, they signed a new contract with them back a couple of years ago when there were so much, so they were trying to get different jails to, to take inmates. And it seemed like it went up to thirty or thirty-five dollars. Uh, and these are, are low-risk inmates that are coming in. It's not the high-risk, uh, lower, medium security inmates coming in. A lot of, uh, nonviolent drug users and that type of thing that are repeat offenders that have just got stuck in the system and can't get out the system. And they need to be in jail, but they, uh, they're not a big flight risk and not a real high security risk.
Uh, this is City of Homewood Public Safety Center that CMH is currently under construction.
We're actually, we're actually building this facility right now. It has a, a forty-person jail inside of a court facility. Um, it has a full E-nine-one-one center in it and a storm facility. This, uh, by the new codes, anytime that you're dispatching out of, uh, a facility now, it's called a, uh, critical needs one facility. And there are certain regulations above what is just required for a jail that you have to do. And I'm just, to dispatch your, your different deputies around the county. Uh, this, um, E-nine-one-one center and dispatch is all in one. We also have a storm shelter there for the employees and for the inmates. So, uh, this project is about twenty million dollars. It's a, but it's a really large amount of site work on this project. With, it's seventy feet of elevation from the top to the bottom. So we got employees on the secure parking on the back and, uh, public parking on the front. But it's got a large court facility in it, a large training facility for the, uh, for the city police department, uh, police administration, their tax squad, um, SWAT squad. Uh, they also have, uh, large evidence storage room inside of this, this building and a building to park their specialty vehicles in the back of the, on the back secure parking area. This is actually the same building we showed you before where the renovation, this is the first phase of this I talked about. I actually did this when I was still at Jefferson County with my firm, um, with the firm I'm with now. Uh, it was the renovation of this building, the front part of the building is twenty thousand square feet, two floors. Uh, we had to come in and add an elevator to it because when the building was built, it didn't have an elevator to it. It had two entrances, one from the high side and one from the low side. We also attached it to a building behind that was, uh, previously housed by the economic development people and a warehouse and a carpenter shop behind it and made it back into a, uh, E-nine-one-one dispatch below it. Also the sheriff's administration, they moved all the administration into one, uh, large area there. Another project, I was there when these buildings were built in the eighties. This is the one I was talking to you about, the federal judges had a lot to do with this, especially the tall one here. The tall one here was built for six hundred and twenty, uh, inmates. We double bunked it in the early nineties when the crack cocaine was first came out and was so rampant around town and double bunked it to a thousand thirty-five. When we did this renovation, there were fourteen hundred in that tall building. The other building with the, it just shows the blue, little central, uh, remote control station there is for the best rapport house. It was built for a hundred and twenty-five, double bunked to two hundred. And right before I left the county, we added on to the top of the, uh, the jail and added another hundred beds. Since it, that, it was direct supervision, since that time, uh, Lathan Associates coming in and renovated to make it indirect supervision. Uh, this job was about sixteen million dollars in the renovation. We did it while it was fully occupied, uh, never had a breach of security. Came in, put new security systems in, new HVAC systems in, uh, new plumbing systems in because it was just worn out from the overcrowding that we had. Um, the, came in and redid all the locks in the jails, all the, all the electronics were completely redone. Uh, like I said, it's, it's, it's a fairly large facility, both of them. It had to be done in thirty-two phases and the two buildings are twelve miles apart. So you can imagine the logistical problems that we had. Oh, we also renovated kitchen and so we had to feed out of a temporary place while we were, uh, renovating the kitchen.
And this slide here talks a little bit about project control. Again, in the sake of time, we won't go through all of this, but, um, it describes what our process would be in the design process, what information would we need to glean from you, uh, to proceed, um, what your budget is and when you wanna be in this facility. That's, that's, that and the budget obviously are, are two of the biggest driving forces of what you would be doing here. So we would find out when you would need this facility, if we would need to do design in phases so that we can start sooner than if we were to go through a full design process and issue drawings as a bid. Um, so that's what this speaks to a little bit is how that process would work with, with you guys and with, with sheriff to come up with what, how many, how many state, how many federal, um, to determine sizes of common areas, to determine, um, what budget's going to be. Billy and I spoke a little bit earlier, we don't know, um, you know, if you have a site, would utilities need to be brought in? So if those are the kinds of things that we're talking about in parameters, we need to glean what those parameters are so that we can come up with a realistic and if we need to, an aggressive design schedule that is issued, issued in phases such as a site work package, site work utilities, uh, footings and foundations just so that, um, as federal, you discussed about the federal judge, he's like, when are you starting? You know, they don't care about design time, they wanna know when this thing is starting. So those are the kind of things that this.
Construction costs, the way they are right now, we've seen a six percent increase in construction cost since last September. That's, I mean, that's, that's a large jump.
It is. Why is it?
Well, part of it is tariffs. Well, part of it's tariffs.
Tariffs.
Part of it is that the margin has been so tight on construction for a pretty good while, and workers have gotten where they're not available, and so there's, it's demand, and so the price of our labor has gone up, materials up about two percent, but labor on the construction side of it, overall in the state of Alabama and the southeast is up, the remainder of it, it's up about eight or nine percent, and it's averaging out about about a six percent. In fact, in the last year and a half, or eighteen months, or twenty months, when we got the construction news last month, it said it was up twelve point one percent in that length of time. I don't think it'll hold at that, but I do think that you're going to continue to see, you know, a two to three percent or so increase per twelve months going forward.
What type of acreage do you see that, on average? I know that probably might be a good question, but...
Three hundred beds, is that what we're talking about? In Talladega, what we have is about five acres, four to five acres. I think you can tighten it up a little bit, but what you want to be, federal guidelines require you to have some outside facilities, you've got to have parking for visitation. I mean, now I know you've got remote visitation and you've got video visitation, different things that you can do, where you don't have that, but you're still going to have some that's going to be coming, depending on if you decide if you want a court, one, you know, like an early hearing court right beside it, beside the jail, so you don't have to transfer the inmates. That's a big cost to transfer inmates. I know we had to do it between twelve miles, like we're talking between, between buildings, and actually, when I was looking to build a jail when we were so overcrowded, we were looking at a place about fifteen or eighteen miles away, so we really looked at a court at that time. Also, are we going to have to have a package plant for sewage? I don't know if there's sewer would be available on the site. If it is, if it's not, then you'd have to have room for a package plant, which would be additional space out there because you've got to have the pumps stationed for it, you've got to have also a pond there for it to clean the water. So, there's a lot of variables in there, but I'd say on average, four to five acres.
And this last slide here, just we, Billy and I tried to distill, again, in the sake of time, down what some project design points that we think are important. First, and I'll let Billy expand on it a bit, but building systems that must be secure, extremely durable, energy efficient, and low maintenance. We personally, as Lathan Associates Architects, do a lot of schoolwork, K-12 schoolwork. We did Hackleburg, as we mentioned. Any school system we work with, it doesn't matter if they are a wealthy school system or not, we design in mind with the idea that maintenance is, staff is limited, that they must, these systems must be durable, and especially in a, in a jail system, the systems have to be where you're not having to chase why a mechanical unit's not working. You need to be doing the job of running a jail. So, that's, that's that first very, very important main point we wanted to make there.
For thirty years, I sat on your side of the table. And when we were hiring architects and doing construction work for these jails, I mean, there were things that specifically I looked at, how durable the systems in the jail. I mean, jails are terrible environments. They've got twenty-four hours a day to see how they can tear up a place. So, the harder, hardened that we can make it to do that, the less maintenance you're going to have to do and less operating costs you go. I know it's a large expense to build a jail, but you want it to last thirty or forty, fifty years, okay, without any major renovations having to happen, and doing it with the least amount of maintenance that you have to do on it to keep it in operation. The operating cost on a jail, with your manpower, with your maintenance, with your utilities, if they're not efficiently done, then we haven't done our job, okay? And that's, that's what I was looking for, and I think this team has experience to do that for you. I want, the systems that we're putting in here, every one of them are going to be reviewed by us and by you to be sure that the systems that we can do, put in there, they're the most efficient kind, that we can put the correct amount of staffing in there, that tells you how many staff you need for that, still do it efficiently, but also make it safe for your employees and for the inmates, because that's an important thing when you've got lawsuits coming out of courts. But I cannot impress upon you the need to make this jail as hardened as you can make it. I mean, they, again, they sit there and think about how they can tear it up, so that's, that's what I think about when I'm looking over our, our design architect's shoulders. I'm actually the quality control person in our office, and also put together with the security systems. I know a fair amount about the security systems and worked with them for the last thirty-five, forty years, and I'm constantly asking, is there a way that we can do this more efficiently? And look at the maintenance cost on this, look at the energy cost on this, look at any kind of operating cost where you've got employees going in there to be sure, like we said, safe and efficient.
The next point, we, again, I think speaks to what Billy was saying, a thirty to fifty year building, it's the possibility of enhanced construction administration services above and beyond bi-weekly meetings tailored to the owner's needs. And what that means is typically, as an architect, we hold bi-weekly meetings with the owner, the architect, and the contractor to discuss job issues. We can also tailor our services so that it's more of a three, two to three days a week visit, where we have someone here seeing that what we are designing and what Billy has overseen in the design process is being actually implemented, is being, you know, the proper amount of rebar, the proper amount of laying block correctly. You know, you hear horror stories all the time about inmates digging out drought lines because they're trying to get to the interior of the block, or they're trying to, you know, a lot of people compare schools to jails, and in a lot of ways, it's similar, but you've got younger kids trying to figure out for eight hours a day how to tear it up, but you've got people living here figuring out how to try to tear it up. So, there is a possibility of, of adding us as more of a construction manager arm, as we spoke to on Talladega, where we were more of a clerk of the works or a construction manager type architect, that could also be part of our design services as well. The next item, and I'll let Billy speak about this, but is the knowledge of the ACA requirements for the possibility of housing federal inmates. I know Scott had mentioned that potentially to me.
There, there's a lot of regulations that are required to have state inmates, federal inmates, and even local inmates in there, especially if you get sued. And I know Sheriff has a lot immunity from suits, but I've sat on the witness stand many times myself because of suits from inmates in federal court and in state court. We had one that escaped years ago, when the construction was done, we had an eight-inch bar or pipe inside of a window, and the window was fourteen inches, and it slanted at the bottom, where it got up against the, to the window, it was only four, it was supposed to be no more, no greater than four and a half inches, but this one was four and seven eighths, and it was, he wasn't like me, he wasn't robust like me, he was a skinny guy that greased himself up and tied sheets together, broke out, tied sheets together, but he didn't realize he was fifty-nine feet up and he only had twenty feet of sheets, but he fell to the ground, broke himself up. He sued us, it was a federal suit, but sued us for not making the jail escape proof. But it still costs money. I mean, and that's, you know, there's a lot of regulations though, like we talked about before, outside recreation halls, interior halls, you've got to give them a place for a library, law library, you've got to have medical facilities, you've got to have certain things in the kitchen at certain temperatures. They actually have a lot more rights than, than me and you do out in the public, and a federal judge backing it up to say that you give them those rights. So, we're very, very diligent when we look at ACA. These rules change every year a little bit, but we stay abreast of them so we can design your jail to meet all of their guidelines and regulations.
And the next one sort of dovetails into that, efficient design that allows for proper staffing and faculty for ultimate security, and basically what that means, and I'll put it again in schools, or in terms of a school, is we try our best to do facilities that, these are large facilities, but with long hallways that have centered location points where they can see down the hallways, they can see when something, something's happening. And obviously, security is of the utmost importance in a correctional facility. So, I'll let Billy expand on that a little bit.
What we're seeing nationwide is, and what ACA recommends, is about five inmates to one personnel. You're not ever going to have that.
No way.
Typically, what we're seeing in the state is about double that, about nine or ten to one. Some of them are twelve or thirteen to one. The federal judges usually, when they're looking at it, the ones, the cases that I've sat in court with, they pushed us to have no greater than nine to one. So, we try to, when we're looking at it, we try to make that as efficient as we can to get it nine, eight, nine, seven, if we can do it with the right design, you can make it efficient, and still let you have enough staff there to safely operate the jail, but also not have staff there that doesn't make it efficiently operated. One deputy, and I don't know if y'all have ever thought about it this way, but we thought about it when we were building new jails, if you've got one deputy that makes thirty thousand dollars a year, time you pay benefits, over a thirty-year career, it's about three to three and a half million dollars, that's the cost of county. So, everyone that we can save from you having to add and still be able to safely, and properly, you know, properly staff the sheriff's department, but still make it safe in that, inside that jail, and where you can securely manage the jail, then, then we've saved three and a half million dollars. Again, it's still got to be properly staffed, you want to be able to be sure everybody's safe, but we want to do everything we can to make it as efficient as possible.
Lastly, probably most importantly, just for the project itself, is meeting construction budgets and minimizing change orders. Us as a designer, we pride ourselves on thoroughness of documents, and what that equals is a lack of change orders. I'm not saying we don't have change orders, but at the end of the day, we try to produce as few as we can. I know Billy can speak to his firm and their percentage of change orders and how much they have, but ours, our firm is around one to three percent of total cost change orders. State for school systems allows, says plan on ten percent, but we are around one to three percent, and I can let Billy speak to that as well.
And I typically do the budget for our, our firm on, on, on all of our projects, including retail, institutional projects, jail projects, but on our jail projects, we've averaged about two percent change orders, and all of the change orders, but about a half percent, if you typically have been owner requested, that they wanted to change something after we got in, and that, that kind of cost. So, we've averaged about a half, you know, or a little over percent change orders. But as Sean was saying, typically statewide, you see from five to ten percent. We've, we've been very, very good at budgeting and telling you what it's going to cost upfront, and a lot of it on the design side too, is, as I mentioned to Sheriff before, is how many dormitory beds you can have, what kind of classification you've got to have in the jail. You know, we, Talladega County's jail, we had a hundred and twenty dormitory beds added out of three hundred and fifty-two beds, where the addition was about forty-five thousand dollars a bed at that time. If you had all sales at that time, it'd have probably been upwards of fifty-five, you know, fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars a bed. The more we can do in dormitory, the more efficient we can make it, and still be able to operate it. Again, I don't think you ought to cut out of the initial design because where you have to pay for it for the next thirty years by not being able to afford the utility cost, the operation cost, maintaining the jail. So, we look, we try to look at every bit of it, but also give you a, a good budget to start with, tell you what, what we think it's going to cost, and we're able to control that budget and the change orders on, on the project.
Any questions for me, yeah?
We appreciate you coming and sharing this information, my friend.
We appreciate the opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Guys, this is the first initial, really, stages we're getting into. We all, you know, know what we've got to do. We've got to raise some revenue somehow. That's got a lot to do with it, everything to do with it, but like I said, this is the first initial, whatever the commission decides to do, I hope that we can get with, you know, I'll be in the middle of things to tell you what we need. We're looking at some site, we don't even have a site location, we've got some hospitals.
One of the things that we've also, and I haven't even talked about this to Sean, but if you find some sites and you need some, need for us to look at them, we can, we can do some of that upfront thing. We do it for actually no cost. If we go any further than that, then we, we're in business to make a little money too, but if we can help you out front on some of your planning, to give you some due diligence help, then, then we're glad to do that, to help you to, to have an opportunity at the project. We've done a lot of these projects, like I said, I've sat on your side for a long time, and now for the last twelve years, I've been with an architectural firm that's done, since, between renovations and additions and studies for, for jails and, and building new jails and correctional facilities, we've done about twenty projects in the last twelve years. And none of, nobody wants to spend money on jails. I mean, y'all'd rather build roads and keep up your roads, and that's, that's what the taxpayers want to see, but nobody wants us folks out on the street either. But if we, if we can, we're here to help you. If you've got any questions, please don't hesitate to call me or Sean, we're glad to answer any additional questions.
Guys, I've known Billy for quite some time, he's been affiliated with the Sheriff's Association.
Is that right? Think about, what do we make of, what's...
Mrs. Matt McCray needs to go on family medical leave, and I just need a motion in a second allowing her to go on family medical leave and to utilize her sick time.
Okay. Now, you heard the motion, do we have a second on that? We don't have a motion on that. Oh, have a second. Oh, please say aye. See, that's all we have. Is that here a motion ready, John?
I'll make a motion. Have a second.
Oh, please say aye. Okay.